And this is a regular meeting of the Simsbury Board of Selectmen, and I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and as always, we start with public audience, and we'll start with Joan Ko in the front row, and then we'll start with you guys in the back. And everybody has five minutes to speak.
Joan Ko, 26 Wickman Drive. Police Commissioner Mike Long recently made a presentation before the Public Safety Committee that is on SCTV and YouTube to get the political support for adding six more officers to the police budget, although the Public Safety Committee does not have any authority over town budgets. Mike Long, in his various capacities, has been a political operative for decades. It is alleged that Mike Long was instrumental in promoting Nick Bolter to chief and has protected him throughout the firing of a police officer for gossip about Chief Bolter, stating that he wishes that certain officers would leave the department. Chief Bolter, under questioning, could not remember that he made that unprofessional comment, but the officer involved was fired for being untruthful. Commissioner Mike Long reasoned that many private overtime jobs were handled with police from other towns for adding six officers. This is nonsense, since this is an optional job that can be refused and is paid by a private company. The Simsbury Police Department facilitates the police presence at road jobs from many towns. The Simsbury Police Department has one chief, one deputy chief, three lieutenants, and administrative positions for a department with 39 officers, heavy on policy wonks, while service calls are always responded to in a diamondly manner. Commissioner Mike Long was concerned about future retirements and lengthy time for replacement of officers. This is also disingenuous, since many police applicants are transferring from other towns, needing only a few weeks of training to make the transition. Past Police Commissioner Jim Fleming was resurrected from retirement to give credibility to Mike Long's pitch for six more police officers, going overboard by saying the police could die if we don't add any more officers. In reality, the offices are first responders, and response calls are all made. The police could use mutual aid or reroute offices to prioritize the calls in emergencies. Commissioner Fleming resigned after the town manager Maria Capriola drafted an MOU, taking over the oversight of the police department, stating he believes in the rule of law. The gap occurs when the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance can't respond to the call and other volunteer ambulance services are required. This time, perhaps, could kill people. In a majority, in a major emergency, it is the fire department that has the charge over the events, not the police department. Commissioner Mike Long, using his political acuity, decided to go with a full-court press on his demands for budgeting six police officers that eventually will be much ado about nothing. Commissioner Mike Long should be lobbying for a new building for the police department before he asks for additional offices. Police Commissioner Mike Long, in an email, stated, quote, "As you are well aware, the disagreement between the SPC, Simsbury Police Commission, and Town Manager's office have existed almost from the day she was hired," end quote. This appears to be Commissioner Long's effort to throw dots at Town Manager Maria Capriola in retaliation for her nonminding memorandum of understanding taking over the police commission responsibilities. Simsbury's town planner has existed after, have exited. The Simsbury Town Planner has exited after several years trying to do a highly professional job under the micromanagement of an insecure town manager with vindictive behavior.
Thirty seconds.
Our loss was another town's gain with highly respected professional town planner. The town planner position was open from December 31st to February 14th without an interim town plan, used under the position of the management Maria Capriola. The town website for job opportunities posted director of planning, community development, more than 30 days continuous. Continuous must have been optional, since the website has the position eliminated for a week and again posted to the present. Town Manager Maria Capriola has been interviewing applicants for the position of director and planning. The person should have the credentials, perform the duties, enabled to work with staff, boards, commission, developer, and organizations with respect and guidance. The Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, under the direction of Megan Hilliard, has been in chaos with long-term volunteers leaving under the accusation of lies and mismanagement.
Joan?
Town Manager Maria Capriola, I just have a couple of words.
Two, please.
Has favored the chamber by placing Town Manager Maria Capriola as director and placing tourism under the management of the chamber. Tourism has 24/7 service that cannot be provided by a chamber, and tax money should be used to enhance field organization, is a fee-sustaining organization by the businesses the taxpayers of Simsbury should not support. The chamber with their tax dollars, it should be noted that the last filing of the 990 tax return was in 2018, with two years of filings missing. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Pat, Twitter at Joan Ko, Facebook. Thank you for the extra time, I appreciate it.
We'll add it to your next piece. Okay, sir, would you like to come up?
Me, too.
State your name and address.
I don't have any prepared lines, but my name is Sean Murphy, and I live at 312 Old Farms Road. My wife Holly and I have lived there for over 35 years. In fact, Wendy, we met you in my garage when you were campaigning.
Yep.
But what led me to come tonight is that we paid off the mortgage, and I had to come in here and pay our taxes. And I started thinking about the fact that, you know, we've raised a family here, and we're lucky enough that two of our three children bought houses and now are raising their families in Simsbury. And I grew up in Ridgefield. I don't know if you know where that is, down in Fairfield County. And my mother lived in the house that I grew up in until she died. And in Ridgefield, once she turned 65, they capped her taxes on her house, on the property. And it's a program that people at age 65 qualify for. And I guess my question is, why doesn't Simsbury do that? For, you know, maybe not everybody, but at least people that have lived here for X number of years, 10, 20 years or something, have been contributing all along. I don't even know if this is the correct venue to bring this up, but I think it's worthy of, you know, some investigation and perhaps see, I know that many of our friends leave town, you know, not so much because of the taxes per se, but they, it's one of the reasons. And, you know, I think it would be nice for the people that have contributed for many, many years to the towns, schools and whatnot through their, you know, taxes, to get a little bit of a break, because most of us are retired by the time we reach the age of 65. And I just use that number. I guess, you know, you could choose whatever number you'd like, but I would like to hope that maybe the town would be willing to look into that and see if it's viable or not for the town to be able to afford it.
Thank you. Thanks. That's a great segue, sir.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
And our last public audience person.
Hi, Debbie Thibodeau, 5 Wicklet Drive. I'd like to start by welcoming our new board members and also thanking all the board members for your service to our town. Thank you for stepping up to the challenge and for seeking input in formulating your direction for Simsbury. As a 20-year Simsbury resident and 10-year bicycle pedestrian advocate, I'd like to share some ideas that I hope you will consider in finalizing the board's two-year goals, annual budget, and ARPA funding allocation. A walkable-bicable community serves the needs of a diverse population for both recreation and transportation, but also benefits the entire community by creating a vibrancy that attracts both young, adults and seniors, drives economic development and tourism, protects home values, and enhances the quality of life for our residents. At the core, Simsbury's walk and bikeability is our network of multi-use trails. These trails are accessible for residents of all ages, abilities, and financial means, benefiting the physical and mental health of the community. Our trails are tremendously popular, especially during the pandemic, with the trail count in 2021 up from pre-pandemic numbers by 20%. I've already written to you about the importance of supporting the Terafil Connector Multi-Use Trail Project, specifically the need to move forward with the design of the Middle Village section, and I suspect you're starting to hear from other people in the community on that particular subject as well. When complete, the trail will create a safe connection to Terafil and fill an important gap in the East Coast Greenway between Simsbury Town Center and Hartford. It holds great economic potential for Terafil Village and the town of Simsbury. In addition to growing our multi-use trail system, I encourage the board to further consider further investment in the maintenance of our multi-use trails in order to reap the full benefit of having an interstate trail system through our town center. The appearance of our trails, including the condition of fencing, vegetation encroachment, and surface conditions, should be a positive reflection of the town's commitment to our trails and provide a safe and pleasing user experience. If we hope to attract visitors to Simsbury with our trails, the impairments of our trail needs to, at minimum, keep up with the neighboring communities. In light of increased trail use, a reevaluation of trail maintenance resources and formalization of a trail maintenance plan may assist in this process. Both the pedestrian, both the bicycle pedestrian master plan, actually, I got that reversed, pedestrian bicycle master plan and parks and open space master plan both address that topic. Related to trail conditions, I also ask the town to try again to work with DEEP to correct the flooding problem along the Farmington River Trail in Stratton Brook State Park. This problem has persisted for years and impacts students and other trail users during wet periods throughout the year. I also encourage the board to continue to support opportunities to promote pedestrian and bicycle safety through town departments and town communications. The collaboration of Public Works and the Police Department on traffic calming projects is a great example. Finally, I encourage the board to consider opportunities to raise awareness of our bike ped trails and amenities available to trail users. Marketing and wayfinding signage would benefit visitors as well as businesses. Thank you for your consideration of supporting our multi-use trail system, the Terafil Connector Trail, and a walkable-bicable Simsbury.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
Didn't recognize you without your bike here, so it was hard to know it was you. We have one more, we have a written-in one, and Maria and I are discussing some ways to enhance and elaborate public audience, but I'm going to read this one. Dear Simsbury Board of Selectmen, I am submitting these public comments in hopes that you will investigate more equitable and accessible public comment options as they pertain to your meetings. I understand that the board has reinstated in-person meetings, however, there are many people in our community who are excluded from participating in an in-person option for a variety of reasons. It is for this reason that I am imploring you to keep a Zoom-in option that allows continued virtual access for all Simsbury residents. This would allow community members who are immunocompromised, disabled, or have a lack of reliable transportation or childcare to participate fully in the democratic process. In this solution, I am proposing that residents be allowed to read their own public comments into the record during the appropriate time slot. While I recognize the steps that the board has taken to fix this problem, including reading written comment into the record, I believe allowing residents to read their own comments would be the more equitable and accessible solution. Virtual access to community events surfaced as the unexpected silver lining of the COVID pandemic. For the first time, previously excluded individuals who were trapped in their homes or at their jobs were able to join into their community's decision-making process and have made a tremendous difference. It would be a terrible shame to lose our voices, especially in forums like public town meetings. The technology is already in place, so it shouldn't be terribly expensive or difficult to continue to offer as a hybrid option. Virtual access is a win-win. It maximizes community engagement and complies with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Please don't take away hard-won independence from the many fragile elderly transplant recipients, mobility, or sensory impaired people in our community. To be clear, the issue of access does not only impact the disabled community, but it is also a crucial equity issue and is such should be of the utmost importance to our elected officials. Thank you very much for your time and attention to this matter. If you have any questions or comments, please do not hesitate to contact me. Best, Jess Bergman. Okay, with that, we move on to the highlight of the night, which is the presentation of the 2223 fiscal year budget by our town manager Maria Capriola. Yeah, I was gonna, well, I was gonna look at it.
It's gonna be on screen.
Okay, I was thinking I could, you don't have to let me in. I had to see it up close.
Oh.
No, no, no.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't getting out. Yes.
Sneak in there. Turn it off, like I turn it down to a good speed.
Just in case.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Sorry, I'm gonna take this off of the presentation. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say welcome back. I think this is the first time in two years I've been back at our formal podium presenting to you all in person, so it's great to be back. And it's great to be back this evening in regards to having so much good news to share. You know, I feel that some, you know, budget years past, I've had to come and share some pretty grim news at times, but I think you'll see as we move forward through the slides this evening that there's just a lot of good news to share and a good story to tell here this evening. So I have a number of key budget objectives as I was working through the budget process with our leadership team. And, you know, one of them is that unless I hear policy direction from you otherwise, which is to really maintain our current services and programs, and, you know, we are still managing components of this pandemic environment, so, you know, again, sort of adapting our services to manage our current conditions. Also advancing some initiatives and priorities that I think you all have made clear that are very important to you, some of those key areas that we focused on throughout the budget process were infrastructure, parks and recreation, public safety, professional development of our staff, as well as economic development. Another objective that we had was to maintain and invest in our existing assets and infrastructure, so this is a common theme, that, you know, we really aren't trying to expand the portfolio, but take care of what we have, because we do have such expansive network of, again, assets and infrastructure. We also, through this budget, did our best to try and utilize cash for our capital needs, particularly for ongoing needs and capital needs that are more routine in nature. And we also refined our capital budgeting this year based upon the final results of the facilities master plan that we had conducted. We also wanted to work on strengthening our long-term financial stability, so a goal we had was to maintain or increase fund balance. As you'll see later this evening, under the proposed budget, we have an opportunity to increase our fund balance. We also wanted to maintain our health insurance fund reserve at or above 12 weeks of expected claims. This budget does achieve that. We would be at about 26% in our reserves, estimated at fiscal year-end 2223, which is just above the 12 weeks of expected claims. We also wanted to maintain commitment to funding our OPEB and pension liabilities, which I will speak to later this evening. And we also did our best to smooth the impact of future debt service increases on upcoming budget years with some cash capacity that we had in the budget. And another key budget objective we had is utilizing the budget process to see if there were some more immediate operating and/or capital needs that might be good candidates for potential use of ARPA dollars. Something at a staff level, I think, that has been important to us, working through the budget process, is trying our best to keep within the spirit of what the intended uses for pandemic, excuse me, for pandemic recovery were with those ARPA dollars. So this is our general fund overview, sort of high-level snapshot, town and board, capital and operating. So the proposed general fund budget is just over $110 million. And these are a handful of our other key funds outside of the general fund that we do have in your budget documents, such as our Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund, the Water Pollution Control Budget, which is our Sewer Enterprise Fund, Health Insurance Fund, to name a few. And this is just a high-level overview of our general fund revenues. As I've mentioned in the past, in Connecticut, we are very limited in terms of the local revenues that we can raise. In many other states, local governments have the ability to significantly diversify their revenue base by coming up with creative fees, taxing structures, et cetera, but in Connecticut, again, we're incredibly limited primarily to the property tax, which reflects about 89% of our overall revenues. So I want to start off by providing our revenue outlook. Again, some very good news to report. Our grand list increased by 3.72% this year. That does generate approximately $3.5 million in new revenue for us. So where is that coming from? Our real estate is increasing by about 1%. That growth is primarily coming from apartment construction in town, as well as the expansion at McLean. This is a very interesting trend. So our motor vehicle valuation has increased by a little over 27.5%, and this is actually a statewide phenomenon. So what many folks may not realize is that our assessors receive essentially a standard book evaluations every year. And with the shortages that we're seeing and new cars that are available, now we're seeing shortages in used cars that are available, that is actually significantly increasing the valuation of used vehicles. So again, this motor vehicle trend is not unique to Simsbury. Again, it is something we are seeing statewide. Personal property has increased by just under 12%. This is very interesting. This was largely driven by work that the electric utility, CLMP, now Eversource, did on a lot of their infrastructure that runs through town. A lot of the work they did increases their personal property value, but it was not actually work that required permitting. So it was value, essentially valuation that was off our radar for a period of time. We do always like to put the disclaimer in that these numbers are the most recent information we have available at this time, but they are subject to change based upon the outcome of assessment appeals. So just a quick snapshot in terms of our grand list growth over the last decade. And for those of you that can see the chart, the two years that are highlighted in red font, those are revaluation years. Revaluation years do tend to be outlier years for us, in that you might see large spikes in increases, you know, an increase, you might see a large decrease. We do have a revaluation year coming up next year. But when we take a look at that sort of historic growth over a 10-year period, over a 20-year period of time, when we take out revaluation years with looking at, again, these three most recent years, you can see that we've had incredibly strong new growth for three consecutive years. That's really not the norm. And in fact, outside of those three years, there was only one other year outside of revaluation year in the last 20 years that we exceeded 2%. And in a more typical year, you might see new growth around 0.8%, 1%. So again, you know, I think this is a really nice story to tell in terms of, you know, we're continuing to see strong interest in Simsbury, whether it's new development, renovations of homes, et cetera, but again, just a really nice, nice story to tell. So as we are building the budget, as you all know, the Board of Finance does prefer for us to use an assumption rate on our tax collection rate of 98.5%. Our tax collection revenues have remained stable despite the pandemic environment. We've been very fortunate in that regard. Our town clerk, that office, the revenues continue to remain strong. We've seen during the pandemic a significant number of homeowners that are refinancing mortgages due to the low interest rates. There's also been a very hot real estate market, as folks are well aware, so our conveyance tax and land recording fees do remain strong. Similarly, our building permit activity remains strong as well, and we're seeing a lot of residential investment by homeowners. So those are oftentimes, it's, you know, a higher number of permits that we're seeing, sometimes lower value because that work is being done on homes, but again, a really positive sign to see our residents investing and the housing stock here in town. So our interest income, as you know, during the pandemic, really took a significant dive. That was one area where our revenues weren't strong. We are estimating a very small increase in the upcoming year, seeing some little upticks there in interest income from about $30,000. And as we've done in years past, we are utilizing the governor's proposed budget at this point in the budget process for estimating our state revenues. In most cases, our state revenues are going to remain flat under the proposal, or the increases were relatively negligible. The two key areas where that is different, so ECS is our Education Cost Sharing Grant. That is increasing by about $466,000 from current year to next. And then the governor also had a proposal to cap the mill rate on motor vehicles at 29 mils. So currently, that cap is at 45 mils, which doesn't apply to us because our mill rate is below 45 mils. Under this proposal, the state would also provide a vehicle reimbursement back to the town of Simsbury, just over $2 million. Our estimate in terms of the estimated revenue loss to the town of Simsbury under that proposal is just about $200,000 at this point of time, based on the information we currently have available to us. We did also confirm that under this proposal, the Fire District would in fact receive a separate payment for motor vehicle reimbursement as well, just over $290,000, and that information has been shared with the Fire District. And again, this is just a snapshot of our general fund expenditures and our sort of categories or functions of local government, including education. And this shows our percentage increases and decreases over current year to proposed for next year. And the next slide, I'll start walking through what some of those expenditure drivers are showing the increases. So we are looking at an operating increase under the proposed budget of 3.67%. We do have a debt service decrease this year. As you all know, as we have a very large school renovation project nearing, and debt service that will be taken on associated with that, we took a strategic approach at utilizing savings from debt service, utilizing some new growth, taking cash capacity in this budget to help smooth future debt service increases. So I will speak to that a little, a little bit more later in the presentation. In regards to salaries, as you all know, our negotiated, our contracted salaries, those we do budget for within the salary line items, a number of our contracts are settled. In fact, our two largest union groups are the sworn officers, who are in the police department, as well as our ASME unit. Our ASME unit is actually our largest bargaining group that consists of all of our Public Works and Parks employees. Those contracts are settled, so those salaries are budgeted for within the salary line items. We also budget for step increases. And then for our unsettled contracts, looking at statewide settlement data, we do budget responsibly and plan for an anticipated settlement, and we do budget for that in contingency and have continued to do so. Another impact we had on the budget is the minimum wage. We will actually have the minimum wage changed twice during the upcoming fiscal year. It will affect us on July 1, and then again on June 1. This particularly affects Parks and Recreation, a lot of our summer, summer workers, you know, working up at the farms, a lot of our seasonal workers helping out Public Works and Parks, a lot of our library pages. So that increase, not including crossing guards, is about a $40,000 impact to the budget. Another category is our crossing guards. We also need to adjust their compensation. They are compensated per day, but we wanted to make sure that what they're being compensated is equivalent to at least the minimum wage. So that included about another $16,000 increase to the budget, again, really associated with that minimum wage increase. And then for pension and OPEB, I think, again, this is some really good news to report, that we that we were able to reduce the interest rate assumption to 6.5%. That is the professional advice at this time we are being given by our actuaries, as well as our financial advisors. And with the way that the market has performed, and based on our census data, et cetera, the actuarial recommended contribution results at a 6.5% interest rate assumption, it results in about a $19,000 increase. So again, I think very, very fortunate there. That's a very modest increase while being able to, you know, be financially responsible and further reduce that interest rate assumption to 6.5. We're currently at 6.625. So in terms of some other expenditure trends, like many folks, we are seeing market increases and inflation. In our world, we wanted to highlight some of the key areas right now in municipal government where we're seeing some, some key inflation associated with COVID. One of them is fuel. Another is in the area of our fleet. We're seeing many of our fleet purchases, whether it's police, whether it's public works, increasing about 5%. A lot of our software programs, we're seeing increases there as well, pretty consistently across the board. Another area where we're seeing the impacts of inflation are our agricultural, building and cleaning supplies. Grass seed, as a for example, has gone up in some cases 30%. So this was an area where we're definitely seeing some inflation impacts. I think, as I've mentioned previously, I know I've spoken about this with the, to the Board of Finance, is our capital project cost estimates have increased in many cases. What we're finding is that estimates that were very good, very solid, based in sound methodology this time last year are no longer good, as we're seeing increases in labor and materials for construction and things of that nature. And then, of course, like, like many other folks, we're seeing delays in receiving vehicles, equipment and supplies. Also in this budget, just to adjust to actual spend, we're recommending that we increase the legal expenses for our labor attorney by $25,000. And another key trend for the upcoming year, as you may recall, we engaged and embarked on an incredible infrastructure upgrade to our public safety radio system. It was a very important project. It had reached the end of its useful life. But now that we do have this modern equipment, this modern system, we have the first full year of the implementation of our annual contract essentially with the vendor, as well as the ongoing maintenance that we need to do moving forward on that system. So in total, that's about a $20,000 impact to the operating budget. And then part of that will be then transferred to the CNR fund for the ongoing maintenance. And then lastly, under expenditure trends, I do just want to reference this. So you might recall that the Board of Selectmen had gradually worked to bring the, what I call the community use contribution, up to $181,715. When we did the extensive Parks and Recreation Fund analysis, we did find that if we were truly reimbursing the special revenue fund for those community uses of the fund, the contribution would actually be in excess of 300. But again, we had for a few years been at that 181,715. That was decreased, I believe, on the evening of the public hearing on the budget in April of last year to 151,715. Again, based on that analysis that we had done previously, I was recommending that we at least reinstate that funding to the Parks and Recreation Fund. I think that does also improve equity for our recreation program participants. So a few areas that I think deserve some attention in terms of consideration for potential service improvements, and we'll definitely talk much more extensively about these during our upcoming budget workshops. A lot of the areas are staffing. And one of the service improvements that I would ask for consideration is an IT specialist position. So many of you are aware that we have a very small IT department, only consisting of two people. As we've moved forward, sort of in this new world, and we've become more and more reliant on technology, you know, really looking to build some resiliency and depth, so we have more staff available. And also, you know, cybersecurity and some of those other issues are just, we really need for our IT manager to be able to spend more of his time focusing on those strategic tasks, such as cybersecurity. And again, this department has been stretched fairly thin for a very long time. And again, it just really came to, I think, more, came more to our attention, again, during the pandemic, again, with a need for building resiliency there. Network engineering support is some additional on-call support services that we would like to have for IT. The Kalia Specialist, so I think this is something that has been talked about rather extensively, but this would be looking to hire a civilian staff member to perform the accreditation duties for the police department. As you'll see, that particular position is substantially less expensive than having a sworn officer perform those duties. Also, as you know, the police department has requested six additional officers. I am asking that we consider the possible addition of one sworn officer at this time. As you'll see later in my presentation, I'm also recommending a police staffing study, which, which we'll speak a little bit more about, again, just coming up. This next item with construction inspection services, I think this is a really neat opportunity for, again, us to capture some efficiencies. So we are very fortunate, and we have a relatively new, very skilled civil engineer working for us out at Water Pollution Control. And he is performing the construction inspection services for sewer. But we do believe that that individual has the capacity and the skill set to also help us with performing inspection services of the utility work that's completed in town. So, you know, we spend so much money on our infrastructure, and right now, there's a gap that we have in that we don't have staff generally or contractors who are going out and monitoring when, say, for example, a utility makes a cut into our roadway. But because that individual is working out of the sewer department, that is an enterprise fund. If that individual is performing services for the general fund, the general fund would have an obligation to reimburse the enterprise fund. But again, we think this is, again, using our resources really wisely, and it's a low-cost solution that would add a lot of value to make sure that, again, our infrastructure is not getting, you know, damaged or put into disrepair from utility work. And again, that's something that we'll, we'll talk more about during the budget workshop. A couple of smaller dollar items, but nonetheless, very important. You all had supported the Pollinator Initiative within the last year, and we were hoping to get some seed funding to start being able to purchase some supplies for some of the gardens that staff would like to do. And many of you know, we also have the Simsbury Farms 50th Anniversary coming up, and we would very, very much like to do some community events around that, similar to what we did with the 350th Anniversary. The staff there and, and the various groups that are engaged with Parks and Recreation would like the opportunity to, again, I think, provide some neat community programming. And the other service improvement is that we would very much like to be able to offer our division heads an opportunity to engage in executive coaching. We currently have funding in the budget that allows for essentially one department head per year to be able to do so. And all of the department heads who have engaged in the opportunity have just been so incredibly positive about, about the experience and how they feel that it's helped them be a better leader, and it's just been a really wonderful opportunity. And again, we would very much like to extend that to our division heads as well. So if, in fact, you guys said, oh, these are all great ideas, we love them, we want to fund all of these service improvements, it would have an estimated tax impact of about $36 a year, and the median valued home here in Simsbury, and it would affect the mill rate by about 0.17 mils. I'm just going to get us some water. So something else I'd like to discuss with you all is potentially using some ARPA dollars to help, help us with staffing our social services department more robustly. And it's something I know I spoke about at Tribe Board, it's something I've become very passionate about. But I am recommending that we move forward with two interim social workers for the town that would support the mental health and wellbeing of our residents. I do believe that supports pandemic recovery. I think, again, Kristen will be able to speak to this very nicely in further detail at the budget workshop, but it's definitely just something that we're seeing. I'm sure you've all also seen the articles, whether it's in the Current or the CT Mirror recently, about the mental health crisis. We're seeing it, you know, we're on the ground with our residents every day, and we're just seeing, seeing the need. We are able, with the ARPA dollars, to fund positions such as this through December 31st of 2026. The reason I'm referring to them as interim positions is, I can't say with certainty at the end of that four-and-a-half-year period that we'll need those positions at that time, or maybe we only need one position. So again, I think as, if this was approved, as we get further along, we would continue to evaluate whether or not we needed either position, both positions, one position. As you know, the Board of Education has made a similar request for two social workers as well, and to potentially use ARPA funds for that, and I am in support of that, that request. If ARPA dollars were utilized for these social work services, there would be no general fund or taxpayer impact. So just some high-level sort of brainstorming in terms of, again, I think it's been important to staff as we've moved through the budget process to think about, you know, again, what would be some sort of high-level potential uses of ARPA funding, you know, as we move forward? These are just some categories that, you know, we sort of did our best to summarize, again, just to kind of think in, in high-level terms, whether it's public health recovery, business recovery, nonprofit recovery, student educational recovery literacy efforts, mental health and wellbeing recovery, diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives, capital projects that support air quality and HVAC systems and town-owned facilities. Town-owned facilities do actually include the Board of Education buildings as well. Capital projects and purchases that support our outdoor infrastructure, such as our parks, our playgrounds, our trails, open spaces, other outdoor amenities, as you all know, they were very heavily used throughout the pandemic. And then just, you know, other categories or items as, as maybe determined by the board at a later date. So I did also just very briefly, wanted to touch on a couple of Board of Selectmen initiatives that aren't really reflected in the capital budget. Economic development, as you're looking through your budget book, it is located in a few different places. So continued funding for Main Street Partnership, continued funding for the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce. We do have also continued funding for our Business and Career Center, which is located at our library. And also a very, very small budget for the Economic Development Commission to support some of their work items that they've been assigned. Professional development, workforce development, again, I know that's been a priority of not only mine, but of the Board of Selectmen over the last few years. Again, this is one of those items where it is located throughout various departments throughout the budget, but we do have dollars allocated for continuing education. Many of our staff members are required to maintain certain certifications or certain licenses. We also have professional development dollars for our annual leadership retreat, as well as some training dollars for larger group work, some individualized training. We do have a very good tuition reimbursement program for our staff, and we do have some existing executive coaching dollars budgeted, as I mentioned earlier. And in regards to infrastructure, parks and public safety, as I spoke to earlier, I think we highlighted those through our service improvement considerations, and we'll talk rather extensively about them in the upcoming capital project discussion. So as we're moving forward into our capital budget and our debt service budget, you have some of the principles that we really had in mind. Again, we're really doing our best to utilize available cash for those smaller value capital items, our routine capital needs that ideally we would not be bonding for. You know, a good example are items that are under $250,000. Those are generally items we really shouldn't be bonding for. But again, this helps to create less expense to the town in the long run. It helps to free up debt service capacity in the out years of our budget, and it can help to smooth the impact of future debt service increases. We also want to continue to recommend that we build our capital reserve with funds from capital project closeouts and year-end savings when available. You know, some of the types of reasons why we would use a capital reserve might be for emergency expenditures, such as the Owens Brook Open Space Parcel Emergency that we had earlier this year. You know, another opportunity is to use cash from the capital reserve to pay for projects in cash as opposed to bonding for projects, or simply just not moving forward with a project due to lack of cash capacity in the operating budget. It could be used in future years for offsets to debt service to help again smooth debt service. Another reasonable use of the capital reserve is helping with unanticipated cost increases. I think, again, a good example, what we're seeing right now with COVID inflation, that sometimes, again, there were just, you know, unanticipated cost increases that we couldn't have reasonably expected this time last year. Another, I think, reasonable use of our capital reserve are unanticipated grant opportunities that might come to our attention, but that might also require a local match. And as always, I think we continue to, you know, analyze and quantify and refine our baseline capital and CNR needs on an annual basis. So this is just a snapshot of our capital budget revenues. Largest sources proposed being bonds, grants, ARPA dollars and cash. Just a high-level summary of the major categories that we have recommended for capital budget I'm sorry, I should have also mentioned, this also does include the education projects for the capital budget. So for public works, a lot of these are, again, sort of routine or ongoing projects. So I'm sure that some things like our pavement or roads and our sidewalk reconstruction probably does not look unfamiliar to you all. You may recall, in particular with the sidewalk reconstruction and the improvement of our ADA ramps, several years ago, I think we're now into year four of that program, is that there was a 20-year plan at this contribution amount to slowly but surely improve and bring up to code our sidewalks and our sidewalk ramps. We also have proposed the second tranche of money that would allow us to do the Phase One site and safety improvements to the Town Hall parking lot, as well as the lighting and just sort of the crosswalk area out in front of Town Hall. That is a state-owned road, so there are some complexities with that, but we are working through that. We've also proposed in this budget to bump up the design associated with the Flower Bridge Repair Project. We have been programming the repair of the bridge for some time in fiscal year 2324. But, you know, folks, I know will be very disappointed, but similar to when we built the park at the bridge, we will have to close the bridge for the entire season when we move forward with the repair work. We really want to do our best to make the most of that construction season, so thought it would be prudent to pull out the design piece of that work and to essentially pre-fund the design part of that project in 2223 with cash, again, so we could get a good jumpstart on that project. And then the Eno Entrance Improvements and the Eno Parking Lot Improvements really do go hand in hand. And this, again, is a project that's, I think, a really special opportunity. It's, again, one that I know is very important to myself and to Tom, because Eno is a historic building, and it is not great in terms of accessibility, right? There's a lot to be desired, and we have the ability to make some pretty significant improvements to the accessibility of the entrances to Eno, as well as the parking lot. And again, what's, I think, really also very special about this project is we have the, the Eno Wood Trust, and the trustees have been very understanding and supportive of this project, and they have allowed us to accrue funds over time in the trust that we can use towards this project. So a large part of the Eno Entrance Improvement Project would actually be funded by dollars from the trust. And then for Culture Parks and Recreation, the golf course irrigation system replacement, which, again, we've been talking about for some time. The multi-use trail from Route 10 to Curtis Park. So this, again, you might recall, we were notified that should funds from the Federal Transportation Alternative Program be allocated, that we would receive these dollars. We have still not received these dollars, but we are still optimistic that they will be coming to us. So this grant, again, would fund the construction of the trail from Route 10 to Curtis Park. We've also set aside funds for potential renovations and expansion to the Banshell Performing Arts Center, as well as proposing to repair and replace the Terriffell tennis courts and replace those with pickleball courts. And this is actually something you'll see in your budget book that we're recommending using ARPA funding for. So moving on to our CNR budget, as you can see, again, general fund cash is the most significant proposed source, followed by our capital reserve fund, which, again, is essentially cash that we would be using. Again, these are our needs that are typically $250,000 or less in value. So the CNR fund does also accept a number of operating transfers. So one of the operating transfers that comes in, which is general fund cash, is we do have $210,000 in the highway budget for our large public works truck. We do replace one per year. Those are the large trucks that we use during our snow plowing operations. This, again, is an example where we're seeing about a 5% increase. So in the past, you would have seen this budgeted at about a So in the past, you would have seen this budgeted at about $185,000, but, you know, going out to market now, we're seeing those costs at around $210,000. It also includes operating transfers for the materials recycling crushing operation. We've also proposed a modest $5,000 transfer from the public works budget for community farm repairs. So again, this is something where it's a good example of the Facilities Master Plan helping us to better ascertain what are our needs. We own the farm that is currently leased by Gifs of Love, but we own the farm, and we own that infrastructure, and we are responsible for maintaining that infrastructure in a good condition, and it's a farm. So there are just, and it's an old farmhouse, and some, and I know there are just always things that go wrong, from something maybe as simple as an appliance breaking to electrical work needing to be done. But it wasn't, again, something we really had a good handle on, more budgeting for. Again, this is a recommendation as we moved through the Facilities Master Plan. Another operating transfer are the three cruisers for the police department, as well as the administrative vehicle for the police department that we do budget for in the operating budget and transfer to CNR. Again, there was about a 5% increase as well for those vehicles. And I mentioned earlier, the emergency management budget does also have a CNR transfer for radio system repairs and maintenance. For our CNR revenues, we do have that traditional $416,250 a year, five-year payback method, which is from the general fund. We're also proposing an additional $322,000 in cash for capital from the general fund, since we do have some cash capacity this year. And then we're also recommending for CNR needs, use of $290,000 from the capital reserves for a number of CNR items. As I mentioned earlier, as a for example, I am recommending that we move forward with the staffing study for the police department, some of our other police department needs, and then a couple of uses we funded out of the capital reserve last year, such as our athletic field irrigation that came out of the parks and parks and open space master plan. Our athletic field irrigation is very old. It has exceeded its useful life, so little by little start going in and replacing those systems. And with the utilization of what we've proposed from the capital fund reserves, we're still estimating about $3 million in the capital reserve for future needs. So this is just a high-level snapshot of by category or sort of function of local government, our proposed CNR fund expenditures. And what we've done on these slides is we often get the question of, so what items are you recommending that we pay for with the traditional payback method? So we've highlighted those items in blue font this evening, and Melissa put together a great one-page sort of cheat sheet that flags those items for you, I think, in a very easy-to-digest way. But on this particular slide, these are mostly items for public works, particularly the highway division that would really advance their work, whether it's, again, truck replacement, equipment replacement, snowplow replacements, things of that nature, drainage work. Something I know, again, that's been very important to our traffic authority team, and I was very encouraged when you all said it was important to you during goal setting as well, is really continuing to move forward with looking at safety studies and traffic calming measures. I think the pilot project we did over at Notch is a great example of where that can be, you know, just incredibly successful. These next items for public works are largely more facilities-oriented, and again, some of these items, while they're smaller dollar value, again, were the outcome of our Facilities Master Plan, such as, you know, some painting and stair work at Scout Hall, some air volume control work at the library and Town Hall. You may recall last year, we mentioned that our elevators are quite old, and that we would sort of break this project into two phases, that we would do the design work in the upcoming year with the hope of replacing our elevators in a future year, and then some other smaller facility projects as well. For Culture Parks and Recreation, again, I don't think this list is probably terribly surprising to folks who have been on the board, because we have now had the results of our Parks and Open Space Master Plan for a few years. We do make, you know, adjustments as needed to that plan. But the first bullet I really did just want to highlight for you, the Simsbury Farms Playground Playscape, that's actually a project that was approved for the fiscal year we're sitting in. And due to COVID inflation, playscapes have gone up about 30% to 35% in cost, and the lead time we're seeing is at least six months, if not longer, from the time you place the order until when you actually get the playscape. So in order to complete this project, we would now need an additional allocation of $75,000. We are proposing use of ARPA dollars for this. Again, our playgrounds were very heavily used during the pandemic. This particular playscape is well beyond its useful life. As I mentioned, it was an appropriation that was approved for the current fiscal year. Then we have our ongoing playscape refurbishment for our smaller-scale playscapes, our park entrance signs, the We Talk Softball Field backstop. You might recall last year, we did push that out one more year, but that backstop is actually over 40 years old, and it doesn't meet current code any longer. There are a number of other items here as well that we've discussed in the past, such as some of the renovations to the clubhouse that are needed. And then for police.
How big is that clubhouse roof? It feels like, I mean, you could put a new roof on your house for 50 grand. Why is it five times the cost of a roof for a house?
Yeah, that's a great question. I did find that. I'm gonna make a note. Let me just grab my pen. I'm gonna make a note of that. We'll find out how big the square footage is for you.
Yeah, I love that. Sorry, just that one, that one caught my eye.
No worries.
What if they're not putting solar up there?
Well, if it's 70 grand for the shingles, it's gotta be a million bucks for the solar at that rate.
We'll find out. We'll find out and get back to you guys.
Those must be special.
Government shingles.
The police department, I think we've talked, you know, extensively about the cruisers, the administrative vehicle, the staffing study. There are now that annual ongoing expense for the body warden cameras and car cameras, firearm replacements, and some of their mobile data terminal needs. Those are the laptops that go inside of their cruisers. And for the library, this is part of the technology plan that we introduced last year. As you know, we did not have a technology plan for the town, and we were not, you know, budgeting for our ongoing technology needs. So we are recommending as part of that technology plan, an amount of funding to help us replace the public terminals at the library. For general government, again, largely the focus here are various technology needs that we have, computer replacements for staff, a cybersecurity audit, et cetera. We also budget for revaluation here. As I mentioned, we are required by statute to perform a revaluation once every five years. We do budget even amounts every year over a five-year period, so when revaluation happens, we have the funding available to perform that activity. And then we have a number of our sewer projects listed as well. So maintaining a healthy fund balance is important for us. You know, bond rating agencies do recommend for communities comparable to us, AAA-rated communities in Connecticut, that we try to maintain a fund balance in the range of about 15% to 17%. Communities across the country that are not as reliant on the property tax, that number is often much higher, as recommended by bond rating agencies, but here in Connecticut it's a little different. Just as a reminder, the general fund reserve should not be used for routine operating expenses, nor should it be used for mill rate relief. That's definitely a no-no, as the bond rating agencies would not like to see us do that. What we have done in terms of a projected fund balance contribution, we calculate that because we know that our anticipated tax collection rate is going to be around 99.5% to 99.6%. But again, using that assumption rate of 98.5% that the Board of Finance prefers, we can reasonably anticipate that we will have about $890,000. That would then be a projected contribution to fund balance. So based on this current budget proposal, projected year-end 2122 would be 17.77%, and projected year-end for 2223 would be 18.15%. That is a little higher than the 17% target range. Again, a conversation could then be had at that point at fiscal year-end 2223, perhaps, you know, do we transfer some to the capital reserve? Do we transfer some to our pension liabilities? There would be some options there. And this is just, I think, a nice chart because it really demonstrates, you know, over the last five or six years, how we've done, I think, a good sort of steady job of getting that fund balance contribution up more towards that 15% to 17% range that our bond rating agencies like to see. So I think this is the question that most of our residents always want to know, how does this affect me? What's the impact on me? And the way that we calculate this on an annual basis is we take a look at the median-valued single-family home in Simsbury. And 100% of that value is about $306,000. 70% of that value, which is what folks are taxed on, is just under $215,000. So under the proposed budget, the mill rate would decrease from 37.41 mills to 37.07 mills. This would create some modest tax relief for folks with a median-valued, single-family home. If we were to then fund all of the recommended service improvements, that would add an additional .17 mills, or a mill rate of 37.24 mills, and that does exclude the fire district, but that would still result in a tax decrease of about .45% for our residents, or a tax decrease of about $36 a year for the median-valued home in Simsbury. This is another chart I think is so helpful for our residents. Where do the tax dollars go? This is not unusual in Connecticut. You know, about 70% of most budgets do go towards education operating expenses, and then the rest, you know, of the budgets are generally town functions of government. Again, a variation or sort of exception to that is actually that capital for the Board of Ed does actually show up on the town's budget. All right, so in summary, this budget does fund our current services and programs. It would lower the mill rate, providing some tax relief to our residents. I think it does advance key initiatives and priorities of the Board of Selectmen. It continues to invest in our existing infrastructure and assets while utilizing some cash capacity that we have to the extent possible. It lowers the pension and OPAB interest rate assumption for our long-term financial health. It increases our fund balance, and maintains a healthy health insurance reserve. It also maintains our capital reserve at a healthy level, and I think we've provided a good start at recommending some potential uses of ARPA funding for various facets of pandemic recovery for our community. Some suggested topics for further discussion during Budget Workshop, for those of you who have been with us for some time, you might recall that I'll usually flag key policy discussion items for you that I think really deserve some extra attention and time. And so those, you know, areas in particular, we did receive from a few of our outside agencies, some funding requests for increased funding, service improvements, right? That's a policy decision if you want to move in that direction. Again, this notion of using debt service savings and revenue growth to fund some of our capital needs in cash, those dollars could then be allocated in future budget years to help smooth our debt service increases that we're expecting associated with the Latimer Lane renovation. And some of you may recall, this is going back a little bit now, but in fiscal year 201819, we did have a pretty significant decrease in debt service at that time, and we did, in that particular fiscal year, allocate a significant amount of that debt capacity towards cash for capital, and we were able to pay for a number of items in cash, such as our paving, that we wouldn't have otherwise been able to do. But again, that does help us in out years because then we have less bonded debt service from 201819. Again, a couple of other, I think, policy conversations is your comfort level of using capital fund reserve for some of our capital needs, as well as the recommended uses of ARPA dollars for some of the operating and capital needs that we've proposed. And then as we work through budget, we always get ideas about really looking ahead, you know, further into the future, and we are going to continue to monitor state budget and intergovernmental revenue. This concept around the motor vehicle tax and the 29, you know, mill rate cap, along with some of the other nuanced pieces of that proposal, is very interesting. We are monitoring that closely. Something else I think would be very good for us to dig into more next time around is really taking a look at our CNR needs. We have been budgeting for some time for 16 to 50 as the traditional contribution for our CNR needs. But as we presented last year, you can see that our CNR needs far exceed that on an annual basis, and again, that's not to expand our infrastructure, that's just to maintain what we have. I think continuing to really think about the town's contribution to the Parks and Recreation Fund and where we might be able to continue to implement some of the recommendations from the analysis that was completed. And lastly, another project that I would love for us to work on is evaluating the feasibility of implementing engineering permit fees with some of those revenues helping to fund inspection services. We do have two Budget Workshops coming up. One is on Thursday, March 10th at 5:30, and then we have our second workshop, which is all day on Saturday, March 12th. As always, in the past, we encourage board members to flag items for further discussion, ask questions, and when possible, please send your questions in advance to the town manager's office. It does help us just to expedite the responses for you. And then we have some key budget dates coming up in the process. Tentatively, the Board of Selectmen would adopt a budget on March 14th or 16th, and then present to the Board of Finance on March 22nd. By charter, you have to provide a budget to the Board of Finance by March 31st on an annual basis. And then we have April 5th as our public hearing date on the budget. And of course, the dates are subject to revision. We generally are able to maintain that schedule, I would say, pretty well, but in the event that there were some exigent circumstances or a weather event, some of those dates might shift. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. That was an excellent job for being rusty, if that's what you thought. It was very well presented, and I'm gonna open it up for questions, but I have two firsts. I'm gonna take that as the first selectment and take that as a courtesy for myself. The numbers that were presented, you presented all the service improvements that you were recommending, right?
Sorry, Wendy, one second. Sorry, I was just.
Sure. Get everybody back on live. They can see it.
And then I'm just gonna come back over to the dais.
Oh, yeah. It's easier to look at you over there, though. So I'm gonna base this on what I, from my knowledge from last year, where we had a lot of items, you present the budget, and then there's all the service improvements that are turned over to the Board of Selectmen to add back in, correct? Adding those back in, is that where we get to the recommended ones, where we get to the 37.24?
Yes, correct.
So, okay. And then the other question I had was, how much of the ARPA funding did you target throughout the presentation?
Yeah, so we do, in the budget book, have the capital items that we recommended for some of the items, again, that are programmed in the capital plan. So we, and I don't have a number, a total number off the top of my head for the capital items, but we did recommend in the CNR fund, those two small projects I mentioned, the air volume control projects, the Terrafill Pickleball Courts, and the Simsbury Farms Playscape for the upcoming budget, and some of the further out years for town projects. Eno Memorial Hall is quite, you know, quite old, quite historic. We have over 1.7 million in future HVAC needs that we do have at that building. So when that particular project comes up in the capital plan, we did also recommend using about $1 million of ARPA funding to go towards the HVAC needs at that historic building. We also recommended a few open space projects for ARPA funding. One was the dredging of Town Forest Pond, and a couple of the smaller footbridges and dam work that Jeff had presented on in December, one being Lake Basile, which is close to the Granby Line, and the second being House Rest Pond Dam, which is in the footbridge there, which is just behind the library. And then the operating expenses that we recommended were funding the social workers, and those numbers were in the budget slides and are also in the budget book as well.
Okay. I'm just curious, is the, if you looked at the out years, is all the 7.5 accounted for?
No, we did not. Yeah, we did leave some room, because again, we really, we're really doing our best to try and take a look at the existing capital plan and what we had that, again, might be good candidates for use of ARPA dollars, but assuming, right, that we don't necessarily want to commit all of the $7 million because there are other needs, such as the health there are other needs, such as the Health District has some needs, there may be just, again, other needs that we have, such as our business community and our grant programs and things like that.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to open it up to, I'm looking at Eric and Heather because they're sitting right here, and then to look up to the screen, but anybody have questions? Eric?
I just have, I know we're going to have plenty of time to really dig deep into these things, but just two quick things. For me, it would be helpful when we talk about the ARPA dollars is to not only track what we'd be spending this year, but understanding what decisions we make and how much that's going to cost over four years with a social worker, so that we know how much we have left for some of the more strategic projects that we might be interested in. My only other question right now is around your recommendation for the Police Department. Now, I want to make sure I understand what you're recommending. I saw that there would be a civilian doing the Kalia certification, so presumably, we'd be taking that officer and they would be back doing what police do.
That's correct.
And on top of that, you're recommending the addition of another position. So, in effect, that would be two police officers?
That's, yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'm going to, you're going to go to the screen. Sean or Chris? Amber? No?
Yeah, I'm going to reserve mine until I dive into the budget book. You know, I didn't know that in everybody's book...
The budget book... And we traditionally don't debate or discuss those in the current year, so make sure that when you're looking at those and when we debate them, we're all focused on the current year stuff.
All right, that was easy. All right. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your time and patience. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, 100 million, no problem.
And if I could also just quickly, I really would very much like to just publicly acknowledge and thank Melissa Appleby, our Deputy Town Manager, Amy Meriwether, our Finance Director, Tom Fitzgerald, our Management Specialist, and the whole leadership team. They just put so much time and energy into putting together a very responsible budget for our community, and I'm so proud of the work that they do, and I'm just very grateful to them. And just, again, just wanted to take a quick moment to thank them.
Thank you. We thank them too.
Thanks, Bernie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to dive into my first selectman's report for February 28th, 2022. I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the enormity of what is happening in Ukraine right now, how watching a democratic country to be invaded and attacked for no reason other than power is really shocking to all of us. What is even harder to fathom is seeing people who, until recently, were going about their everyday lives to suddenly having to leave their homes, take up arms, and fight for their freedom. One of the scariest moments to me was seeing the 28-year-old Member of Parliament, as he left the Capitol last week, having been issued two AR-15s so that he could protect his government and country. There have been many other moments that hit close to home, watching people flee or seek shelter with their children, elderly parents, and pets. But the starkness of seeing the responsibility of their government going from leading and legislating to fighting should point out how precious and fragile democracy can be. So, knowing our community, I'm comfortable saying that Simsbury stands with the Ukraine. And we do have the same colors as Ukrainian flags, so I think we're at a good place. So, now on to today's normal lives. I included in tonight's budget a memorandum that I addressed to the board and that I shared with Maria regarding our upcoming budget. Included in that were items that I made note of and shared over the last year, and that came out of the 21-22 budget. I felt there were some things that could be done to help clarify the data and make it easier to navigate. Now that I'm seeing the budget for the first time, I realize why the book is so fat, that there's a lot more detail included in here on the capital projects, which is one of the things that I did see last year. So, happy to know that we'll have a lot more data to go through. My hope is that these recommendations will be provided to the board as we work through the budget book over the next two weeks in preparation for the upcoming workshops. And then I included that were going to be the same dates that you had. I don't know if anyone has any comment on what is in the attached, if they went through them, but most of the items there were things that I felt along the way that was helpful to get through some of the budget documents. And, you know, hopefully, we'll get that data, and you'll realize that as you go along. I do want to point out the mask mandate has been lifted. I know Maria would probably talk about that. So, cases of dropped people are vaccinated. We're here unmasked tonight. And regarding the public audience, now that we're in a hybrid mode, we are hoping to expand how to get your words shared for those who are still uncomfortable coming to the meeting rooms, so keep your eyes open for that. And one pitch here is we're waiting for the zoning commission to pass along to the Board of Selectmen the ADU opt-out baton. If Simsbury is going to opt out of the State ADU Act, we need to work with the public to find out how we want to expand our current regulations so that we can present and represent the best interests of Simsbury going forward. We have until January 2023 to opt out, but I just wanted to put that out there, that that should be coming to us. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Wendy. So, in regard to our coronavirus update, it's, again, good news. We are trending downwards in terms of our number of positive cases. We are also trending downwards in terms of hospitalizations for Hartford County. Many of you probably saw that the CDC recently announced new guidelines for masking based on COVID-19 community levels. We have provided in the Town Manager's Report for folks the link so you can check on our current county, Hartford County, or really any county in the country, to see if they are considered low, medium, or high, and then the masking recommendations for where you live. We've also provided a link through the CDC in terms of how you can learn more about the community levels overview that they've established. As Wendy mentioned, as of today, our town facilities have transitioned to a mask wearing being optional. But the one exception is that, at this point in time, we still are asking our Dial-A-Ride participants on our buses to please continue to mask. I'd also just like to share that the Farmington Valley Health District has scheduled two clinics. It's both vaccination clinics as well as booster clinics on March 2nd and March 23rd. Those clinics are open to students who live in a Farmington Valley Health District town or to students who are enrolled in a school within the Farmington Valley Health District. Our school staff, as well as contractors, may also participate in those clinics. We also have two additions tonight for the Board of Selectmen agenda that I would ask be added to the agenda. They could be added to the agenda with a two-thirds vote. One is regarding the Trust Act reporting requirements. We were able to upload the information on this online on Friday, but essentially, there were some reporting requirements associated with Public Act 1920 that recently changed that would require the Board of Selectmen to provide legislative authorization for us to submit that report. And the second item is regarding the ARPA Work Group in the Finance Subcommittee, which would be to disband the ARPA Work Group but reassign those duties to the Finance Subcommittee. And just a quick note from the Department of Public Works, we have posted our annual MS4 report to the town website, and we have provided a link to that report through the report. Yeah. Right, to the MS4 report through my Town Manager's Report.
Okay. So, is there someone here that would like to make that motion to add Agenda Items I and J to the tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Anybody like, second? All those in favor? Aye.
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 So, that will be added to the agenda?
Thank you.
And we are, oh, we're into Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee Reports. Wondering if anybody has any reports that they'd like to present tonight? Scanning the room in the video. No?
As we know, the Spirit Council is requesting a name change, and we can talk more about that when we get to that item.
Okay.
I can speak to it if there's any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Eric. All right. So, let's get into Selectmen action. And the first item, our tax refund requests. So, we're going to move effective February 28th, 2022 to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $10,316.25 and to authorize Town Manager Maria E. Capriola to execute the tax refunds. Sean?
Second.
Eric, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So, the next item is the name change for the Spirit Council. I see Kristin's on, Maria's here, Eric's here, Sean's here. Who would like to speak to that? If there, anybody wants to speak to that, or if there's any questions? Pretty self-explanatory. Okay.
Yeah, I'll just jump in and share that.
Spirit Council has been considering changing their name through the past several meetings. They wanted to have something that was more easily identifiable with the work that they're doing, and felt that this request for name change would better request, or better reflect what their, what their action items are and what their mission is.
I think it's a great, the Spirit is just a...
But it's an acronym, but it's just...
Some feedback from community surveys that it was also being confused with a religious organization.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, so...
I'd be supportive of this change.
I guess you would be. Okay. So, I'm going to move effective February 28th, 2022 to change the name of the Simsbury Spirit Council to the Simsbury Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Council, and to update the Council's Purpose and Procedures document to reflect that change.
I move.
Sean?
I just wanted to make a note in the procedures, this is a very small detail, but at the very bottom of B, they missed changing Spirit to the new name under ad hoc workers. I don't know if we wanted to correct that prior to approving, or if that matters.
Please make sure that we make that change tomorrow. Thank you for pointing that out.
Very observant, though.
Actually, I'm curious, I've got, Chris, I've got a simple question. Thanks. Heather, is, as I read through it, you were just striking out the name. That's the only changes in your substantive change, seeing as it's our Selectmen Governance Document. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything. It was just a strikeout to the names.
Correct. The only changes are the names. There's nothing substantive.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. You're welcome.
Eric will second that. Any, okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item C is the supplemental appropriation request for the Performing Arts Center parking and accessibility improvements. That one, I am going to turn over to Maria.
Hey, thanks, Wendy. So, again, you may recall that this is a capital project that was currently approved and budgeted for the current fiscal year. We had engaged in design services for that site just because of the nature of it being in wetlands and near a flood plain. And again, at this time, last year during the budget process, we had a very, what we thought was a very good number that we were working with. As we went out to bid for that project, we did receive five bids, which was wonderful. Again, so many firms are so busy right now, you wonder, are we going to get a good response? But we did get a good response from responsible firms. And the project actually came in at $174,000 more than what we had budgeted. You may recall that we also were very fortunate, and we had received a steep grant to help with this project. The maximum amount we could receive under the steep grant was $128,000. So, that was going to be part of the $700,000. The remaining was bond funding that we had received authorization for. And this is to pave a portion of the parking lot down at the pack. It will create handicap accessible parking. And it was also going to create handicap accessible entrance ways to the facility, as well as an accessible path, essentially going around the rock wall area, so that people with disabilities would be able to more easily access, essentially, the front, the front part in front of the wall for performances. Again, I think that this is a very important project from an accessibility standpoint. We also have a very aggressive schedule. As you know, the Performing Arts Center, as they have more robust programming, their season is now longer than it was. In order for us to complete this project before the season gets underway, we would need to start work on this project by about the second week, third week in March at the latest. So, that is why we are coming forward and asking for your support in a supplemental appropriation. Our recommendation would be that we recommend and request $160,000 from our capital reserve. And we also have $14,000 in project savings from the design work that we had performed that we would recommend reallocating to the construction phase of this work.
So, this will be started and finished before this season happens?
That's correct.
And we just found out that we, that the estimates are just pretty new, that we didn't know?
Yes. The estimates just came back last week, I believe, was it Wednesday or Thursday? Wednesday. So, very, very recent that we found out.
Okay.
It seems to be a theme this budget season.
Are we going to see an increase like this around our paving schedule as well?
What do you think, Tom?
For roadway paving, no, we don't think so. The bids right now, the state contractor is still not out, but what they've done in the past, or the practice that the state has, is there's a bid price, and then there's an adjustment factor that's meant to take into account difference in prices of oil. So, we're expecting a slight increase, but nothing to the extent we saw here.
Okay.
So, because they spoke, you don't have access to that contract, we're basically paying a whole lot, a lot more money for...
What I'd say is included in this contract is something different than our roadway paving. This includes all of the site prep, all of the civil site work, the excavation, and then all of the regrading work. And I'll be honest, I'm not intimately familiar with this project. I've been looking at it for about a week now. But this goes into effect, you're paying the contractor's workforce a lot more than you would be paying for the same type of product for repaving a roadway.
All right. Thanks, Tom. That's helpful.
I guess, yeah. I mean, it's upsetting that it's so far off, but I also know how much work and how many smart people were involved in coming up with the original estimates, including, if I'm recalling correctly, outside consultants who we hired.
That's correct.
And I think it's a testament to the times we're living in right now.
Okay. So, I'm going to move effective...
Right, I guess...
Oh, go ahead. She got it.
Oh, my comment is just going to be, you know, this isn't...
Due to any changes in the scope of the project, really, it sounds like it's just being driven by the inflation costs that have happened across the board that are really out of our control. And I know from, you know, working with the Performing Arts Center and being a liaison to the Aging and Disability Commission, you know, this project is really important to the community. It's important to that venue, and the accessibility issues have been issues for a long time. So, even though we're being somewhat penalized by this inflation, it's still a really critical project, and I don't think the inflation's getting better anytime soon. So, I don't think there's really much you can do. It's not like if we put it off, it's, you're going to be guaranteed a lower price. It seems unlikely that would ever happen. So, I think we, you know, I, my thought is, we still need to forge ahead with it.
I'm quite as good on aging and disability.
So, everybody, I think, would be happy with that.
Well, this, this, a project, this project, or it's, it's some form of this project has been circling and circling and circling now for years. And we need to move forward, I think, with it. And the, as well as the, I think, the continued, the longer we don't do something over the, the more that it's going to degrade the site area over there as well. So, I think we need to stop that, make the investment, move forward.
Move effective February 28th, 22 to approve a supplemental appropriation for the Performing Arts Center Parking and Accessibility Improvements Project in the amount of $174,000 to recommend to the Board of Finance using $160,000 from the capital reserve and $14,000 from project savings to fund the work.
That is.
Amber? Second?
Second.
Heather, second that? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. And now, we're up for the Budget Status Report, and we see Amy Meriwether in the room here.
Thank you. Okay. So, Melissa was kind enough to put it up on the screen so you can follow along with what I'm referring to. So, let me just take a second, pull up my page. Okay. So, as usual, we'll start off with the general fund, and I'll just go through some of the highlights I have, and then take any questions that you all might have. Melissa, you need a new mouse.
I wrote the budget.
Yeah. We'll make that exception for you. Okay. It's a little small. Let me try to make it bigger. Okay. So, just on the revenue side of things, where we're, where we're landing thus far, so right here is your total to date, the $64,743,644, or 61% of the current budget. So right here is your total to date, the 64,743,644, or 61% of the current budget. Compared to the 65 million or 63% of budget, we're slightly under about $280,000. This is mainly attributed to, I believe, the building revenue, but I will take you through some of the major changes and give you some explanations for the variances. So starting at the top, we have our building department of this 344,841, and then our town clerks department, revenue is a 466,875. So consistent with prior year, we're seeing some really good volume in these areas. The town clerk revenue likely to exceed budgetary estimates consistent with prior year. However, the projected for the building department likely will not hit budgetary estimates. So if I scroll over just a little bit, you can see that projected for year end is 733, 340, and our budget is this 838,500. So now this could change in the springtime if we see more volume, and we do typically see a bump in the springtime. But as of right now, this is what I'm seeing to date. And as you can see from last year, we're down compared to the same time last year. However, last year, we did have a large permit at the beginning of the, at the fiscal year. Moving down to the town manager's office, we have the 254,250. And as you can see with the projections, there is about 518,000 coming compared to compared to budget through year end. However, I think these estimates are going to change. When we did our estimates for the budget, we had a pilot figure, payment in lieu of taxes of $35,000, and the state is actually providing us $98,000. So I think that is going to remain, that's going to stay, we're okay with that excess revenue. However, they also included some municipal revenue sharing of about $174,000. That was not included in our budgetary estimates when we did the prior year budget. And it seems it was a good idea because I do not think that we'll be getting those funds. We did receive notification from OPM probably a couple of weeks ago now, letting us know that there's a chance we might not get it. It's not definite yet, we could still get it, but usually when the state says there's a chance we're not going to get something, we're probably not going to get it.
Amy, are those revenue sharing items much like the car tax thing they're talking about?
No, this one's different. The municipal revenue sharing has been around for a little bit now. We've never been a part of it. But no, it's not, it's not the same to the car tax. They're not subsidizing us for something else, I don't believe.
Oh, Amy, can I jump in quickly?
Yeah, go ahead.
But Sean, you have a good memory because part of the municipal revenue sharing originally, when the idea sort of first originated, was back when the first discussion of capping the mill rate on motor vehicles came to be. And then it sort of evolved into what it currently exists. So your memory in terms of the original intent, I think, is accurate. But that's not what it evolved into.
Basically, it's what the state meandered with for the last five years, and now they're trying the original thing again. But anyway, we'll move on.
Well, that's a good memory because I forgot about that, too.
It's not really a good memory, it's a bad memory.
Scarred memory. Okay, moving down to the highway department, this 101,000 revenue to date, you will see that we had only about 500 budgeted. This is for a FEMA grant that came in for a prior storm, and it takes a while to get our FEMA grant, so it was not anticipated this year and therefore showing a budget overage. I think that's it for highlights on the revenue. Oh, nope, one more area I wanted to point out. Under the Board of Education, we're showing revenues of about 95,000 right now for our ECS funding. And you can see at the same period last year, we were at 1.6 million. So likely, we actually do have this money. It will be posted probably January, February. But what happened is this money comes in through our State of Connecticut Short Term Investment Fund, and they actually just switched over their banks from BNY Mellon, I forget whoever they switched over to, but they switched over to the new bank. And so we just have to get notification from that new bank as to what our allocation was that hit our account. So some technical difficulties there, but that will be trued up before the next report. Moving on to expenditures.
But Amy, the big one is we're likely going to collect a million seven more than we budgeted.
So as of right now, that's what I am anticipating.
Sorry.
Yep, nope, you're good. I just wanted to check it, it didn't sound.
Million six, million six and change, okay. Thank you.
All right. So for expenditures, we're currently at 50,104,000 or about 47% of expenditures. This is pretty consistent with last year, about 49% of expenditures at 51 million. So it's a difference of about 1.7 million. And as you can see right up here, we had a transfer last year to our capital reserve during the year of about $2 million that did not recur this year and therefore the majority of the 1.7 variance. And then just a few items of note up here, these two highlighted areas, super small, but something that we're keeping an eye on for right now. One is actually already over budget. You can see that the year-to-date is 2698, and our budgeted expenditures are 1625. I just did a conservative 5,000 anticipated for year end, so over budget by about 3,300. And then our legal fees, consistent with prior years, we are seeing an increase here. And again, super small, but something that we're keeping an eye on. If it's consistent with year-end projections, it will be about 5,000 over. Some other areas I wanted to highlight quickly are our assessors office, we're showing savings of about $90,000. This is for that temp position that was approved during the last budget that we are having difficulty filling because it is a temporary position with no benefits and a limited market in assessors in general and governmental arena. We actually are having trouble finding somebody for that position, so there's been some savings there. The 35,000 down here, under our general government, this is just postage and conference and education savings. Down here, this 59,000 relates to the police department, their holiday pay. They have a choice of taking holiday pay or taking comp time. So depending on what they choose depends on our savings. So the majority of that is our gas savings and our holiday pay savings. And then down here, the 61,000 is transitioned our building maintenance department. We had a retiree, and then that position was recently filled at a lower rate. And then the last one, we had some staff turnover at the library for savings of about 54,000. So that's all I had for highlights on the general fund. Is there any questions on the general fund? Okay. Moving on to Simsbury Farms. This is super hard with this mouse. I'm like really struggling over here. The computer's totally winning. Okay.
You're doing great.
All right, so under the special programs, we have our year-to-date of about 267 and 128. You can see this is an increase from the prior year actuals to this date quite significantly. So as you recall, last year, we had canceled or reduced many of the activities at Simsbury Farms due to COVID. So we're seeing that increase this year as we start to normalize our activities. So this is seen mainly in our special programs, our day camps, and then down with our pool activity as well. You can see at the bottom here, we're in a very good position where our revenues are exceeding our expenditures by about 177,000, and our projected for year-end right now is about $100,000 increase to the fund overall. Those of you that utilize the facility, you know that this is highly dependent on weather and subject to change. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a little caveat.
Amy, do you know ballpark what the fund's position is at this point in totality?
Um, no, not offhand. I can send it to you, though. I think it's.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah, it's probably around that 177 less the machinery and equipment surcharges, so it's probably around 100,000, but I'll send it to you.
Okay, just because we've spent so much work over the last five, 10 years trying to get that right to the to the grace of trying to build up a little bit of reserves. But again, not too much because then that shows that fees are out of whack with expenditures, right? So trying to, trying to keep it as equally balanced as we can.
Yep. And then the last fund that I like to point out is our health insurance fund. You can see here that our premiums are about 6.9 million, whereas last time last year was about 7.5 million. We are not decreasing in premiums, it's just a timing of when our payment was cashed into this fund from when we cut our check, basically transferring the money to ourselves from our general fund and the Board of Edges General Fund into the health insurance fund. And then you can see our claims about 7.2 compared to 6.2. And right now, we're in a deficit of about 788,000, again, mainly due to timing. If you take a look over here at the year-end projections, hold on one second. Something looks off. Oh, yep, here we go. The year-end projections, it's a slight surplus of about $43,000. So that's all I have for major highlights. If anybody else has any other questions on any other funds or any other information they would like.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Anybody has any question?
We're not looking at the, are we going, looking at capital or just?
You can look at capital.
Oh, I didn't know if that was, I thought it was in here, too.
It is.
I had just had a general question on the capital sheets. This is a question that comes up, well, it came up to me. So, so the projects, it doesn't, looking at these projects, I assume a good chunk of them, unless I go back to last year's budget or from last year's budget, but I can't really tell from looking at them, but they were budgeted and some have been spent and some have a lot of uncommitted balance, meaning the project is in some state of, how do we know, like, what's the, you know, the reasoning behind some of the projects here that have a full, you know, a large uncommitted balance or things like that? Why weren't they started? Were they from last year? Are they from a couple of years before? Is there a way to identify that?
So I actually have in my sheet what year the funding was authorized, so I can include that if that'll help you so that you can look at some of the projects that are older and kind of get some of the the status updates on those. So probably anything, I believe, like three years or older is what we typically keep an eye on. So I can provide some of those status updates for you at the next quarterly.
Okay, because, yeah, it's just difficult.
From a truing up standpoint, those funds are considered encumbered, right?
Yes.
Right, so they're out, I mean, they're out of our calculations, meaning that, you know, the fund balance and everything already takes them into account as if they're expended, right?
Yeah, I get that. I'm just wondering why these projects are still sitting there if they were budgeted, like they haven't been fully, like the police thing from last year, the $65,000 was spent. It actually happened in the fiscal year that it was budgeted. So just hard to understand why some of these are not finished.
I think a lot of times it's bad staff capacity.
Okay.
It's one, and then sometimes it's held up for either permitting or something else. There could be other challenges associated with that. One of the things I know that I'm kind of looking forward to do is outlining not just what our requests are, but when are we going to do that work, both the design work and the construction work, so that we kind of try to level set that.
Okay.
Case in point, sometimes we'll get an opportunity to apply for a grant, and we're always hungry for that opportunity, but now that's one more project kind of piled on top of everything else, and we have to make sure that we have staff to get that work done.
Well, I was going to say, Maria actually clarified this for me. I think we were just talking about the budget, and I said, you know, why wouldn't we move this, you know, bridge painting out to a new year? But it's, you forget that you need the people to do the job, so we can't just say, let's do everything this year. So that really kind of clarified that for me in real, real life, and you just highlighted that, too. So, okay. Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on. Oh, now we're getting to the, to the good stuff here. No, I meant the reason that you're sitting here in a jacket. Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, Amy. Thank you.
Really, seriously, nobody else has any questions on the financials? Because, I mean, we debated that one for 20 minutes at our bull setting, so just want to make sure everybody gets their questions on the table here.
What did we debate?
This was what I ranted about, that nobody ever asks any questions when we do the budget updates. I'm holding mine until we have our presentations. I'm just saying, this is the current fiscal year, right?
Okay. Okay, so revisions to the Director of Public Works classification. You going to turn this over to Maria again to talk about this?
Thank you. So as everyone knows, Jeff Shea, our town engineer, is retiring from service. And in preparation for his retirement, I had an opportunity to work with Tom Roy, our current Public Works Director, on a restructuring of the Public Works Department that would include engineering becoming a division of Public Works. You know, I think we're very fortunate in that we have Tom with us. Tom is, he's been with us for over 12 years now, and he is a PE. So he is, I think, very well qualified and very well suited to oversee engineering. Our hope is that engineering becomes a division of Public Works, similar to highway, similar to sewer, and that Jeff's position would be reconfigured to a deputy town engineer, who would still be responsible for much of the day-to-day operations of the engineering division, similar to how our highway superintendent or our sewer superintendent function, but they report to Tom. So under this structure, the, again, the engineering division would report to Tom. Again, I think there's also a lot of opportunity there just for efficiencies and synergy. And this, again, I think is just a great opportunity for our organization as well as for Tom. We did run the proposed revisions to the job title and job description and pay range for the Director of Public Works position through the Personnel Subcommittee and had an opportunity to share that with them on Friday of last week. And again, this particular proposal would again update the Public Works classification that would enable Tom to serve as our town engineer.
Okay, and if anyone's interested, there were, we did ask quite a few questions at the Personnel Subcommittee meeting on Friday, so I'm not going to rehash them.
I watched it on TV.
Did you?
Thank you.
Okay, did we answer questions?
You answered my questions.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to move effective February 28, 2022, to approve the revised job title, job description, and pay range for the Director of Public Works position as presented. Yeah, Heather?
Second.
Sean, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, okay.
Thank you. Congratulations, Tom.
Congrats, Tom.
Good job.
Thank you.
We have to stay and be appointed the town engineer. I didn't understand that one. Are you going to?
I will explain it.
Yeah, thank you.
This is an exciting, this is an exciting new development, you know, in the direction of the evolution of town and the streamlining of administration. I love it.
Thank you.
Oh, did you say you wanted, oh, I thought you were going to say so. No, I just wasn't sure why we appoint you separately as a town engineer when you were the, really, the Director of Public Works Town Engineer.
Yeah, I can start, and Tom, feel free to jump in. So under our charter, the charter does list some specific positions that do require Board of Selectmen appointment upon my selection. The town engineer position is identified separately in the charter. And then there's also a very interesting statement in the charter. It's unique to the town engineer position, but it does say that essentially should I want to appoint somebody to the position of town engineer, that I would consult with the Public Works Director. In this case, it is the same individual. Tom and I did confer about this restructuring and his appointment of town engineer. And Bob did confirm that I did, in fact, meet our charter, my charter responsibilities in doing so. So again, this formality really is just to comply with our charter requirement, but then also to reset Tom's salary to reflect his new compensation.
Okay. Okay, so let's move to appoint Thomas Roy as town engineer effective March 1, 2022, and to revise his annual salary to $158,000.
I move.
Sean?
Second.
Eric, second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations, Tom. Thank you.
Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Item G, settlement agreement for the water damage claim at Henry James Memorial School. I think this was pretty self-explanatory. Does anybody want to ask Maria anything, or do you want me to just, do you want to say anything on this?
I'm refusing myself for this item. Just to let the record reflect, please.
Okay. The travelers, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So anyway, let's move February 28, 2022, to approve the settlement agreement related to the Henry James Memorial School insurance claim and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all settlement documents.
So moved.
Amber?
Second.
Heather, second that. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Anybody abstain there? Okay, and that passes. The next item up is the proposed merger of the Simsbury and Granby Chamber of Commerce. Do you, as a member of the chamber, do you guys want to weigh in on this at all?
Do you want to take this one, Melissa?
Sure, yeah, sure. I can definitely do that. I don't know if anyone had an opportunity to vote to any of the information sessions that the chamber held, but this is, of course, you had the communication in the last pack about this opportunity to merge with the Granby Chamber, which they've been working on for several months now. The voting does open tomorrow, so as we discussed at the last meeting, we wanted to make sure that the Board of Selectmen was, you know, weighing in on whether or not we should cast affirmative vote. Marie and I both think that would be of value to, you know, strengthen the chamber and join with Granby. You know, a number of benefits, I think, you know, just increased resources for both organizations that would, that would happen in terms of staffing levels, increased exposure for the business community, more opportunities for members, things of that nature. A larger chamber also just means more of an ability to kind of advocate and leverage support for the business community. So I think it's a positive thing, and if it does go through, I will continue to serve on the combined board for the Simsbury side, so looking forward to that opportunity as well if it goes through.
I just have a question. So if we support this merger, I guess I just don't want to see it translate into that we support subsidizing potential costs that come with, you know, there are a lot of costs with a merger, legal fees and dual leases, staffing, you know, new training. So although when it comes to memberships, looking further out, it may be economical but short-term, you know, do they have the funding in place that they need to go through with this merger?
Yes. Yeah, the short answer is yes. And in terms of the membership fees, those will stay, those will stay the same, so we wouldn't have any impact there. You know, in terms of the physical space, we, at least in the short term, Granby's going to keep their office, we'll keep our office, and then sort of revolve that as needed. But in terms of increased costs, there won't be associated with that.
The only comment I would, I'm going to say is, if the board, you know, the members of the chamber are for this, obviously this, they've been, put this forward as a good idea, and, you know, you guys think it's in the best interest, I'm for it. The only question, and I believe I asked that on the EDC call when they did one of their presentations, is the funding that we give them as the Simsbury Chamber, does, will Granby compensate to an equal level on certain items? You don't have to answer that now, but that's a concern that I have going forward or may question later with the budget, is do we still fund them the way we're funding them if they're a merged entity?
Wendy, I have the same, I have the same questions, is, you know, much like other agencies that operate in many communities, I would expect an accounting of how it's benefiting Simsbury businesses going forward.
If there's an expectation of funding from the taxpayers, right? And that's, I think, a burden we would put on any organization. So in terms of, you know, future requests for funding or continued requests for visitor center or otherwise.
We can talk about that in the budget when, right?
And we do our outside agency requests, you know, that is, those are the statistics that we're asking for. So of course, moving forward, they'd be asked to demonstrate, you know, who in Simsbury is benefiting more than the numbers, so we do, you know, kind of collect that level of detail, so that's-
So we'll be able to revisit that when we do the outside agencies and any other requests.
Exactly. And just, I'm sort of adding to that, is that most of the agencies that we do fund through our outside agency request are actually regional entities. But as Melissa said, they do complete our grant applications, and their backup is in your budget book. And we do ask them specifically, the regional agencies, to tell us how many, you know, Simsbury clients have they served, to essentially specifically report out on Simsbury. So whether it's, you know, Meals on Wheels, or VNA, or Interval House, the reporting that they're providing to us is Simsbury-specific, even though they are a regional entity. And the chamber does complete the application for us.
Have they drawn up expectations of, you know, where they think that this will benefit Simsbury in the future with the merger versus how Simsbury's benefiting now with the chamber as is?
The town specifically, like the town as a municipal entity, or?
The chamber. So have they, you know, in their due diligence and looking at all of this, do they have anything that we could even look at to see?
Should we have the presentation with them?
I saw the presentation, but I just didn't see specific kind of detail. It didn't seem that detailed in terms of-
Well, it's basically benefits the organization and the members, right, I think is what-
Right, but I mean the members of Simsbury.
Yeah. I think we will vote on it, I think, right, I think we're going to rely on your guidance and, you know, as members of the chamber board, and then as we get to any kind of funding from the Board of Selectmen, we can revisit and make sure that it goes to where we think it should go to. So I'm going to move February 20, what does that say? Move February 20, to approve the merger of the Simsbury and Granby Chambers of Commerce, authorize Town Manager Maria E. Capriola to cast an affirmative vote for the merger. Somebody want to?
I'll move that.
Okay, Eric, you second?
I'll second.
Amber, second that? Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, that passes. And now we get to the new addition portion of the agenda, this Trust Act reporting requirements. You did talk about it at the beginning, did you want to add something here? Because-
Yeah, I'll just, again, very quickly. So Public Act 1920 requires us to submit reports to the state when ICE has had access to folks essentially in our custody. What had recently changed in regards to the reporting requirements is that even when we have not had somebody in our custody that we have provided access to, we now have to provide a report. So in the past, no report was needed if this didn't occur. But now, even when it doesn't occur, we're being asked to submit a report. And the way that the legislation was written is that the legislative body needs to essentially authorize or submit these reports. So the chief and I did review this with our town attorney, and he suggested that the legislative body, being the Board of Selectmen, could delegate the responsibility of completing that report to the Simsbury Police Department, and that once that's completed, that they could forward it on to, you know, to my office, we could get that back to you. It is an online report that they do need to complete. And with this change, that form is due March 1st.
So I have a question. Up, so to date, I know we haven't reported, we haven't done the report at all because we haven't needed it.
Exactly.
But we realize we have to do the report, whether we need it or not.
That's the new change, right?
Okay.
That we'll need to do it regardless.
Okay. So I may be getting very picky on this, but when I read that it was the legislative's body's responsibility, I started digging in a little bit. So I just want to, so we're basically turning over the authority to do the report, which is an online report, it says, so it's not something we're going to do and submit it, but relate to the Trust Act on behalf of the town of Simsbury, which I assume means us, not just the town, I mean, the Board of Selectmen falls under the town of Simsbury. And the only thing that I saw missing in there that I was going to ask if we could potentially get behind inserting, is that I saw later on that it requires that we get a copy of the report, that it was actually filed.
Bob suggested that we send that. I think it'll require a little bit of work. I might have to take like a cutting and pasting because it is an online form, but Bob did suggest that we just, you know, forward that completed form onto the board, and it'll be twice a year, I believe, that we-
Is it necessary, my question is, should that be included in the motion that we would get a copy of the, I was going to propose that related to the Trust Act on behalf of the town of Simsbury, and then amend it to insert the words and to provide the report after filing and then comma, until revised and rescinded? Just to make sure that we do know that it's done if there's any issue, and I don't know if anybody-
If you added that language, I would support that.
Okay. So I'm going to, if I could remember what I just said. Move effective February 28, 2022, to authorize the Simsbury Police Department to complete and submit any and all reporting requirements related to the Trust Act on behalf of the town of Simsbury, and insert, and to provide the report after filing, and then, wait, I'm sorry, and report, to provide the report to the town of Simsbury after filing until revised and rescinded.
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question, that means we're going to get a report that says nothing?
We're going to get something that says it was filed.
For what reason?
So that we are aware of our legislative responsibility.
And nothing was filed?
That it was filed for no, for no one. It has to be filed whether there's zero people or there's 10 people. So the act of filing-
I mean, this is just, I mean, this is, this is just busy work, and if there's no, if nothing happens, why do you have to file a report?
It's going to be filed, it's in the letter, and that's what Bob recommended, that they send it to us. So I'm just inserting the words to ensure that it happens and we're aware of it, but it's Bob's recommendation that we get that. So you want to take that up with Bob, that we don't need it, but it's in the document that he recommended we get a copy, along with Town Manager Maria.
Okay.
I made the motion.
Thank you, Eric made the motion. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Amber. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the amended motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain?
I abstain, this doesn't make any sense.
Okay. Okay, so it's four to, four to one. I guess Chris is gone. So that passes. Okay, thank you. And now the last item, well, one of the last, again, is the ARPA. I'm trying to get to it. Oh, I skipped it. Sorry, sorry, guys. ARPA Work Group. So I'm going to talk, talk about this one. That's okay, Maria. So we've had our ARPA Work Group since January 14th. Sean and I have been co-members of the ARPA Work Group. We had Jackie as a member. Jackie is no longer here. And to move forward on it, especially since we're going to be working through this on the budget, I thought it would be a good idea, and I did collaborate with Sean, that we move the duties of this over to our finance subcommittee. Everyone was excited to get involved in ARPA, and I thought it would be a good way to kick off the finance subcommittee, and would continue to be supported by Amy and Melissa, and that we would disband the ARPA Work Group. So the motion is to move effective February 28, 2022, to disband the ARPA Work Group and to reassign those duties to the finance subcommittee. If I could get a motion.
Move that.
Thank you, Sean. Second? Anybody want to second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Amber. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks for your service, Sean, on the work group.
I would pass the part.
I know. I tried to, tried to switch it up. But, okay. So the proposed appointments and reappointments from the Simsbury Republican Town Committee, we have three here. I'd like to move that we take in all three items as written here to appoint these people as of February 28th to their positions. Trying to speed things up. Somebody wants to make a motion for that?
I'm going to approve, Mr. President.
Thank you. Sean approved motion. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Amber, second that? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Oh, well, we're appointing Melissa Appleby here to the Farmington Valley Health District. Let's move effective, we read this, we all know that you're going back into your position because Jeff is leaving. Move effective February 28, 2022, to accept the resignation of Jeff Shea from the Farmington Valley Health District Board of Directors. Further move effective February 28, 2022, to appoint Melissa Appleby to the Farmington Valley Health District Board of Directors for a term set to expire on April 24, 2023.
So moved.
Eric, move that?
Aye.
Sean, second that? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that passes. Resignation of Tim Walzak from the Open Space. Move to accept the resignation of Tim Walzak as a member of the Open Space Committee, retroactive to February 11, 2022. You want to take that?
Yeah, please.
Sean, second?
Second.
Heather, second that? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Resignation of David Bloom and Julie Eaton from the Planning Commission. Move retroactive to February 17 to accept the resignation of David Bloom as a regular member of the Planning Commission. Move effective February 28 to accept the resignation of Julie Eaton as an alternate member of the Planning Commission.
Move those.
Sean moved them? Second?
I'll second.
Amber seconded those. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And now we're appointing to the Planning Commission. Move effective, is that right? Yep. To appoint Julie Eaton as a regular member of the Planning Commission with the term ending December 4, 2023, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of David Bloom